It is 7:30, I'll call the meeting to order. Has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Moving on to recognitions, anybody from the board have anything?
So we would just like to recognize our new team member for joining us at her first board meeting. Welcome.
Yep.
I guess I'm next. I've been welcomed by an amazing group of administrators, but most importantly, I had the opportunity to meet almost 75% of the staff at Neil Wilkins already, and they've just volunteered to come in to meet with me and talk and let me get to know them and their families, so I'm pretty excited for that. So, thank you.
Couple of things going on at the high school this week. We have the blue coats, the drum line, people are coming on Friday. They're coming at 5:00 AM and I believe they're leaving again at 5:00 PM, so the activities complex and all the gyms will be used up for them to be practicing on their way through to the next event. Serving on the WIA Advisory Council, a couple of things that have come up, the NIL, Name, Image, Likeness, did pass. You'll be seeing some stuff coming out on our communications and our Facebook and our social media stuff about some of the rules with that. There are really weird rules that come with it. About 1% of all high school athletes get a NIL deal, but some of the things if a person has started high school, for an example, if Mr. Gravent owns a business and there's a person in high school, since he's already donated money, he could not have an NIL deal with the said student as a freshman in high school until a new person comes into the high school, and if he hasn't donated in the last four years, then Mr. Gravent could have a NIL person represent his business. Lot of different rules out there for it. Again, the rules will be posted out there on our social media website and our athletic website with that, so want to come and learn about those rules, please come see me. Other than that, shot clock was denied again this year for basketball. That's been a thing that keeps coming up with the WIA, so probably next year again, that will come to a vote. Other than that, it's been a great summer so far.
Jim, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Opportunity for public input.
No.
But we signed up. We will then move on to the information and discussion items. We have two of them, the first one being a state budget discussion.
Do you recall, up until late June, we had the fear that our state budget was not going to be approved until September, October. Something happened, and action happened, and we now have a state budget. So that's... We're very grateful because our fiscal year began July 1. This now gives us some of that unknown information, so we can build our budget. Some key dates as we look forward. Third Friday count, third Friday of September, that will be that student count number. October 15th is when the state will release the land value. So those are the two big elements left. We can make estimates, and throughout this presentation, when I say something along the lines of an estimate, what we're doing is the best information that we have right now, and we're applying it. Should be close, but take none of that to the bank. Most of the slideshow that we have is a review of the prior budget slideshows that we've worked on. A preview of what we'll be talking about. We're going to talk about those state aid projections, how they apply to Platteville, then the local impact on Platteville, and that'll be, the one difference is about special education reimbursement. That's a significant change for our district. And then we go and we review what we accomplished in the late spring, and that would be salarying wages for staff, insurance, those are our biggest manipulatives in building our budget, and then understanding the challenges as we go forward. The big picture, general equalization aid. There is no increase in aid from the state for Platteville. So last year, the state designated $5,581,190,000 for that state aid to go towards school. That amount is the same. That'll be the same for the '25, '26 school year. That amount will be the same for the '26, '27 school year. What they also decided was that the categorical aid, up there, the $325 per pupil annually. So in the prior budget, Governor Evers applied a veto and put in 400 years of 325 per pupil annually, it will increase. We're now entering 398 years left of that. So that is increasing. We knew that, though. We had planned for that. That was that $500,000 number, and when you look back at what we did with a 1% wage increase, plus the 7.2% with health insurance, that consumed about 400,000 of that, and then we left about 100,000 for some other additional costs. So those are the big things, but we always have to keep in mind, inflation impacts everything we do. Even with that, we are still going to propose a deficit budget. It is still, the gap is still there. So by the general equalization aid not increasing for any school, what that then does do is push that entire dollar amount, 500,000, onto your property taxes. What happened last year was state aid would compensate, it would subsidize a portion of that in Platteville. It was about 66% state aid, 34% local property taxes. With that increase, none of that will be part of the state aid form. That will be onto our property taxes. So there's an increase, but it isn't the state funding that increase. Special education. Our professional organizations had campaigned very diligently for that 60%, and we were able to convince the lawmakers, and they said, okay, we'll do 42% in this year, and then 45% next year. So in that, for us, that's an additional $400,000 in funds, but be careful with that number on two accounts. One of those lines talks about the term "some certain" versus "some sufficient," and this is a term that was exposed within the last four or five months when talking about special education aid. If it were "some sufficient," we would take all of our applicable special education expenses, submit them to the state, and they would return 42% of that amount. That's not the situation, and that's why that 42, I'm going to call that an estimate, because we don't know. When it's "some certain," what they have designated in the state of Wisconsin is $504.7 million. So now every school submits, and then you get your piece of that. So if all things were the same, last year to this year, that would be 42%. We'd be getting it. But special ed costs go up and down. More than likely, they go up because of inflation, because of services. So I would suspect that 42% is going to be less than. Nothing significant, but still less than. And in year two, it goes up to 45%. Financially, this was the key piece that schools were fighting for, that we were pushing for, and so we're grateful that our lawmakers took that into consideration and worked towards it. The... If we go to the transfer, and this is where, let's be careful with that 400,000 of additional funds. On June 30th of this year, we transferred 2.2 million out of our Fund 10, our general fund, into Fund 27 to make it whole. If everything stays the same, that means at the end of this school year, we'll be transferring 1.8 million into Fund 10. It's a start, we're grateful, but there still is that concern of, that's a lot of money, that's a significant amount of money. There's still long-term funding concerns, and that is, throughout this budget, inflation is not really direct, it's not directly addressed. How inflation? I can imagine, and this is just my opinion, that the conversation would have, could have been at the table when they're negotiating, could have been, well, it's 325 per kid, that should work. Well, that's not, that doesn't compensate for inflation, for the cost of educating our children, for keeping staff, and all of that. So all told, projected additional funds, $903,750. We have those two numbers. Based on that, just a bit of a review, remember the "some certain" versus "some sufficient." So that, that number may go down, the 400,000. Also remember that the per pupil aid, that is on our property taxes. So we have to be careful with that number, because they're not certain, and part of that is that transfer from Fund 10 into Fund 27. Review, one of the things I started with, when we did our 1% raise and healthcare, that was about 400,000 of that. We also, as we go forward to budget, we had a hailstorm, and our, as it is right now, that was a little over a million dollars. Now, nobody could have planned for that, but now that million dollars, we didn't have a budget for. We had a fund balance, we had leftover funds from our capital referendum, so we were able to pay that, but that's a million dollars. That's about what that is. So the need is still going to be there for our district. Now kind of looking into the future. So these are those, those elements that will be there as we go forward, for here, for next year, five, 10 years. Health insurance. We have a one-year health insurance plan. Previously, we would have a three-year plan. Those aren't offered anymore. It's a one-year plan. With all of the different elements that are happening, I believe health insurance is going to continue to go up at a higher rate than 7.2%. We won't know until we go out to bid. Also, let's recall, to keep that at a 7.2% increase, we had to raise our deductible. So the district paid 140,000 more, and each of our employees shoulders some of that burden by having a higher deductible. And there's just another example of our property liability and auto insurance. There's an increase there. So all, it keeps, inflation keeps happening, and it is such an ever-present element. Back to one of the initial concerns, and we've had this with the funding formula for a while now, there isn't really an inflationary connection, a link for that. So looking to the future, we can anticipate it, yearly increases in every bill we pay. One of the things that we have done as a board, we have made it a point to keep our mill rate steady, to not have that fluctuate a lot. One of the tools that we've used in the past is debt defeesance. So we'll have to consider that again. Now, remember, we still have to get the third Friday count, we still have to get the October 15th, and then analyze it and see, is debt defeesance an option? That is paying off the interest on the back end of our debts. The federal funding uncertainty, right now, for me, that's a wild card. We just don't know what the federal government's going to do. The most recent, and I had a meeting today with other members of WASDA, and here's what, here's what they believe will occur. So the title funds, those are the federal funds. Title I is our biggest federal fund, that's $360,000. What the federal government has proposed, I believe, is that currently the federal government takes title funds, allows them to the state educational system. For us, it's the DPI. The DPI is the handler, they manage it and they distribute it. A path that may happen is, those funds will be pulled back, reallocated, maybe not as much as a way to save, but then when they come back, the term, and I don't fully understand this, but they keep throwing around the term a block grant. And the difference there is the block grant is then managed by the state legislature. So then the DPI is out of the equation, state legislature then distributes it. I don't know what that means as far as, we don't know. It hasn't happened yet, but that's a difference, and that's why, to me, that federal funding is a wild card.
Don't they usually do block grants on a reimbursement?
I don't know. You could be very right on, I just don't know.
Which would really stink, I mean...
I have no idea how they work. Another element...
Yeah, in a meeting that we heard, because we're having problems with our Title II, we have a point just adult education, so those funds are, we thought we had a year of them left. The skinny budget came out, it was still in there, and now the budget came out, they're gone. But we heard that in Washington, Title I for K-12 and IDEA was the funding that was going to be still the same.
Yes.
But the distribution of it...
Yeah, I, the other thing that you can do, that I was informed that you can do with a block grant, is you can put qualifiers on it. You can say where some of that money goes. So, I don't know, those are, that's a wild card. We'll have to keep tabs on that, and we'll have to budget conservatively, not really knowing if the federal government will participate.
We have to show where all of it's encumbered, I think, or will be encumbered. Obfuscate it. I think, yep, that's what we have to do, as we're fishing for this other money to come back to us.
A good time with these ongoing expense considerations, the gap, the gap between expenses and revenues, the gap is still there, it's still present. This state budget allows that gap to not be as wide for this school year. That's good. One of the significant trade-offs is that $500,000 is not coming from the state, it's coming from our local property tax base. So that element, we have to keep in consideration. Even, even operating referendums, they work for a, they have a lifetime. They, they get to a point where they don't work anymore. We're a good situation. Platteville is 2006. Here's an idea to consider, and this, this came out of the WASB, the convention in Milwaukee. This is one where all variables remaining the same, but this is something that I wasn't aware of before this year, and part of our challenge is to continually explore different revenues that we can bring in. So, starting with, currently, our 4K program is five days a week, full day. We've made that decision, and it's had great success for us. Those students only count as .6 FTE. Now, that was an element that we have lobbied for, for our government to recognize, hey, if we have them five for full days, shouldn't that be 1.0? In the negotiations, it didn't make it. So for this budget, that's, that's not going to happen. With Fund 80, that is our community service fund, the state is taking care of .6. We can, using the rules that are present, use Fund 80 to capture the .4, and that's something that, it's available, so we should consider that. The numbers there, well, let's talk about the first bullet and then, then letter A. If you have experience with grants, one of the, I think, general rule with grants is the difference between supplement and supplant. And so to apply this, it's to, it's to supplement that cost, and that's why it's that .4, not the full cost. So we would look at six teachers, four assistants, rough number, 735,000. 40% of that, 294,000. And if our Fund 80, we would, we are going to propose an increase from 80,000 to 90,000. Currently, that pays for our community resource officer, that pays for our weekend custodian, and then a crossing guard. So inflation, that's going up. So that's what we'll propose. I mean, if we had to do everything right now, that'd be 90,000. So you add the numbers together, and they equal 384,000. So let's be very careful where it says increases. The Fund 80 tax levy mill rate, it would increase that by 21 cents per 1,000. That seems drastic for only a $384,000 increase. That's because, when we do our total levy, there are three pieces to that levy. There is Fund 10, the general, and last year, that was 5.6 million. And this could help put into perspective. Fund 39, that is border-approved debt, and then also, when we defeesed, that was 3.8 million. Fund 80 last year was 80,000. So when, when we say that's 21 cents per 1,000, that's just that, that Fund 80 part. When you apply this to the full tax levy, it's a cent. So here's what we don't know. We don't know the count, we don't know the equalized value yet. Once we have those informations, those pieces of information, we have options to consider, what we want to do as a district. One would be continue to defees. One would be, nope, not going to defees, we're going to take advantage of Fund 80 for 4K. You could do a mix of both, and all three of those options help our mill rate stay steady. And that's what we've used it for in the past, to keep it around that seven level. If we do none of those, which is an option, the result would be that that mill rate would have a significant drop. And with that, we would, we really want to avoid the yo-yo when it comes to it, and that's why, that's why we try and keep that steady. So these are tools that I'm now aware of, this tool, we can use that with defeesance and, and start to make decisions based on that.
Real quick on this. It could only be for the .4, the supplement, not to completely supplant the 735?
Correct. In what Dimitri has helped research, and there's a, there is a document in the board package that really goes into Fund 80. It all comes down to when you're audited, do you, will the auditor agree that yes, supplements, supplant, that 4%, I think is a solid argument that we can use it. The full 1.0, I don't believe it will.
Okay. There are other districts around our area?
Yes, there are. Yeah, in our area, and I also, I was at a WASDA board meeting in June, and I ran into a couple of districts that, yeah, we do that. So, this page, just going through the budget outlook, we appreciate the increased state funding, we still have rising costs, the concern is that inflation. So, we went into this year... So we went into this year providing our staff a 1% raise. As a school district, we have to do what we can to provide more of a raise that's closer to the cost of living increase. We make every effort to manage it within our means. And we still remain with ensure high levels of learning for all in a safe, inclusive learning community, every student, every day. We welcome the expected increase in state and local revenue. It's not a long-term solution. It's just that long-term sustainability. That's the puzzle that the Platteville School District is trying to solve, as with all the other school districts. What's the best way to stay true to every kid, every day gets high levels of instruction? We will be providing more updates as we get closer, but this all comes to a head at that annual meeting.
Any questions or comments for anyone on the state budget discussion? Thanks for the presentation. We'll move on to item B in the information discussion, which is a land purchase.
This is an item that we brought to operations. Adjoining Neil Wilkins, there is a, it's a little over two-acre lot that is for sale. We were approached by the owner. Would we be interested? And we are interested as a school for two reasons. Primarily, this would increase the safety at Neil Wilkins. That lot could be transformed into a parking lot. It could be used for a safer bus pickup and drop-off. It could be used as a way so we do not have buses and vehicles traveling on the same lane at the same time. So as a district, we should look into this. This is a real big safety opportunity to improve. Also, as a school district, whenever land that's adjoining comes up for sale, we should be interested. You always want to look into that. Because as a school, we're concerned with day-to-day. We also have to look out for 25, 50 years down the road. And if you have land that adjoins a building, that's a mixed set. So the conversation would be from the board, and I'll allow operations committees to kind of take it from here.
So what we did is we got the details of it from the seller, figured out exactly what the price was, or the acreage was, because it was different than what was listed. So it is 2.25. The asking price, because it is owned R2 currently. So it creates a premium in a desirable neighborhood. It was $125. So we wanted to put it forward to the board and see if it's something that we wanted to move forward with. My understanding is that this would then, if it is something we want to do, down below, there's a whole process that we go through, and ultimately, it's presented to the electorate at the annual meeting for consideration.
And that's the reason why this is not an action item yet. It can progress to that stage, but with the discussion, we're looking at, is the board still interested in this? And then the business office starts working through that process and presenting it.
Because currently, the way it's set up is that, you know, you're driving off of Broadway. And then the buses travel in front of the school. And then they're then traveling out to Luchon. And then over to May Street, Grand Street, and around. We know that that's not an improved area necessarily there on the egress to the west, excuse me, to the east, onto Luchon. We also have parents picking up and dropping off in that exact same area. This land is the land where Luchon Street comes out, where the buses exit. It's directly to the north there. If you've ever driven by, I think there's a barn out there. That's where the land sits right on.
There is not enough parking for families when that school has events. There are parking on Broadway, up and down it.
And these are our littlest learners that guaranteed will get picked up and dropped off there.
And that we want parents and families engaged and able to have access to the school.
Correct. I compare this to, similar to the project that we did over at Westview, where the smallest portion of our last referendum that passed for the buildings was to improve the safety of Westview. And that was widely accepted and understood by the community. Here's an opportunity to do that, to start that process. If you've had a chance to look at it, what do you think? Should we move forward with the process that it would take to begin looking at the purchase of this land?
Yes.
Need to move forward. We only got one shot.
To move it forward. And you have the laid out on what that would look like between now and the end of October, when we do the annual meeting. We could get that, we could have that wheel in motion.
Yes, it'll start by the next regular board meeting. We have something to do.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that one? Okay, so then move on to the portion of the agenda that is the consent agenda.
In the consent agenda, we have the minutes of previous meeting on June 11th. We have the financial report and bills of the month for June, in which total receipts, $4,514,356.48. All line items to follow. We have the academic standards. That's an annual requirement from the state of Wisconsin. And we have those. Those have been updated. I suggest that letter E is pulled from the consent agenda and along with letter F be pulled from the consent agenda. We have letter G, resignation, middle school track coach. Letter H, resignation, high school assistant volleyball coach. I, resignation, middle school administrative assistant. J, new hire, middle school food service. And then letter K, fall extracurricular and some of the year.
I have a question. Is this where I can ask questions?
Oh, you bet.
Consent agenda, okay. So for the full year and fall activities list and all the classes, is it full year? Like, is everything on there, or is it just fall activities?
A little bit of both.
Okay. So if it's full year, should we have everything on there? Including the fall activities? Or how do we, you know what I mean? Like, I was like, oh, I see.
Those positions may still be open.
I can kind of explain too.
Yeah.
So fall '25, '26 means like the fall activities. And then the full year extracurricular list is like the full school year advisor positions, like FFA is all year round or all year long.
But I believe Ashley's point is there are some full year that are still thinking.
Yes, that's, that's true. But then in November, I believe it is, or maybe October, the winter '25, '26 more coaches will be brought to the board. And then the same thing in late winter. All the spring coaches will be brought to the board.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions or comments on items on the consent agenda?
On the notice of the academic standards, and maybe I need to clear my cache, but none of the links work on that.
I did receive an email from, they're working for me, from Diligent, which is now Board Docs, explaining that there is a bug. Now, according to Diligent, it's fixed.
Scroll down, like, it's all the DPI links, like, none of them.
Oh, these?
Yeah, none of those. Like, the ACT one works, but the rest of them don't.
And what I was, I was.
Does it give you the error, five or four not allowed?
Mine's just like linking.
Mine does the same thing. I never.
I got the four mine.
Yeah.
So when I hover over them, it says control and click. I'm on math. I'm able to get it.
I've been able to get in all of them.
User error.
Well, it could be a bug.
Oh, neither.
It does.
I've got all, okay.
Any other questions or comments on items on the consent agenda? If not, if we could get a motion, please.
Second.
Motion by Kurt. Second by Ben to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Extentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. If I could get a motion, a second please, for the adoption of the actual agenda.
Hold on, second.
Motion by Ashley, second by Betsy, to approve the agenda as presented. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to action items. First item up, Westview first grade teacher.
Recommendation to hire Christian Guida for the first grade elementary teacher position.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Betsy, to approve the hiring of Christian Guida as the first grade elementary teacher for the '25, '26 school year as presented. Questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Third grade elementary.
Recommendation to hire Jacob Korwitz for a third grade teacher position.
I heard a motion by Colleen just before the second by Betsy. To approve the hiring of Jacob Korwitz for a third grade teacher for the '25, '26 school year as presented. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Fifth grade teacher.
Recommendation is to hire Jackie Linsmeyer for that fifth grade position.
So, second.
Motion by Betsy, second by Ashley, to approve the hiring of Jackie Linsmeyer as presented. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Middle school counselor.
Recommendation is to approve the hiring of Allison White as our middle school counselor.
Motion by Kurt, second by Colleen, to approve the hiring of Allison White as middle school counselor for the '25, '26 school year as presented. Questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Multilingual services coordinator.
Recommendation is to approve the hiring of Dr. Nicole Lopez Perkapile.
Motion by Ben, second by Colleen, to approve the hiring of Nicole Lopez Perkapile as the multilingual services coordinator for the '25, '26 school year as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Door access controls.
This is an item that came through operations. It is, I believe it was Windows 98 was supporting our door access controls. This would put us a little bit closer to modern day times. And one of the key facets, and operations can also speak to this. One of the key facets that interested me is that when a door is ajar, this links with our camera system. And it notifies. That's very helpful.
For a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Motion by Kurt and a second by Ben to approve the door access control updates as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Boiler for Neil Wilkins.
This also was forwarded through operations. The situation we have is the boiler at Neil Wilkins is showing us very distinct signs of failure. If we are able to approve this purchase now with the recommendation, that would give enough lead time for the boiler to be procured and then installed before the cold weather comes.
Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Ashley, to approve the HVAC updates that Neil Wilkins has presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And second and final reading of some policies.
Yep, final reading of internet safety acceptable use and staff use, primarily cellphone lab.
Hold on.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Betsy, to approve the second and final reading of the policies as they are presented. Questions or comments on those? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Hold on.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Ashley, to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We adjourned at 8:13 PM.